The next item on the agenda is the proposed letter of support for a seasonal restaurant to use gray water systems. I think the council has had the time to review this. Graywater has, Graywater, let me, let's, let's let it clear out a little.
for. Proposed letter of support for a seasonal restaurant to use gray water systems.
All the way in the back. Yeah, I see it back there. The gray water systems. We have sent a letter of support, I don't think it was last year, was, yeah, it was last year we sent a letter of support the same way. Does anybody have any questions in reference to this? Yes, Josh?
I guess I just want to get clarity is what health department rules need to change? And I guess I'm not really certain as to.
So we were hoping that the new health department person would be on the agenda, but it was a very packed agenda. So when that person comes forward, actually no health department things need to change. It just needs to be an extended deal from what was already done.
The, I guess, as far as that, I don't, I kind of want to know what, what discharge is actually happening, if there is any.
There is no discharge. It was in a holding tank. So it's being taken away. So it's just ham washing. It's just ham washing. There's no like septic or sewage or anything like that. It's literally ham washing station in a holding tank above ground and it is being taken away.
Then the, the individuals who are washing their hands, that's the public and the, the staff?
Correct. I think there was a sink, yeah, as long, you know, as a regulation as well. So yes, that's all getting, and it's getting pumped out, I think it was like once a week or, you know, as needed or whatever.
So it's technically not just draining?
No, not at all, not at all.
Okay, so they're taking it away and they're disposing of it properly?
Of the gray water, correct.
They're just looking for permission to do this?
To continue doing that.
To continue doing this at their restaurant?
Correct.
Okay.
I think the other issue was that there, I've got the copy of the Maryland Association of Counties put together the, you know, their, when their affiliate came and testified unfavorable on the bill last year, the issue was with, you know, first of all, the definition of gray water is not.
Right, we defined that and it is now no longer, it is not a statewide bill. It is a local bill. So that was one of the biggest issues.
And then the, I guess the issue as far as the, are there any changes as far as the health department or health, I know each county, of course, has their own individual health department rules sometimes on these things. I guess the difference as far as are we, are they able to wash hands legally in the space or is that, is that, is that a health code violation that I don't, that's what I was trying to get clarity from.
From what I've understood, no, and I think that's why you all did the letter of support already.
Yeah, it was different from last year.
Yeah.
Does the, does the bill have to say on a former dredge site? Couldn't it just say in a remote area and?
Yeah. Well, it's.
I think, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, this was, the bill was different last year in the sense that we actually had.
Yeah, well, it was just because of the local part of it.
Yeah, and I think, I don't think there was, they were trying to specify then that this is very separate, this is very different from a normal situation.
Correct.
It could be, you know, I think we had talked last year about even having them, they, there was a concern about the discharge for anything that would have gone out, that it wasn't being collected, that they could then, we had actually talked to them about changing the language about, you know, there's an EPA designation for soaps and other kinds of things that are biodegradable, that are natural, that are non-harmful. This looks like though they've changed that from the addition, difference of this year's bill to then just saying it's holding tank, which.
So I guess what I would ask is in section C, I don't want to.
Sure.
I don't want to rock any boats, but would it be more relevant to say the restaurant is located in a form, in a remote area with minimal public access? Because we could be leaving out some, some seasonal restaurants, believe me, they're not too many on a dredge site.
Right, right.
Think that's workable?
I think, yeah. We can make amendment.
Okay, I just don't want to, I don't want to blow anything up, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's any other dredge sites in.
The, the only other make-o concern which they brought up, I've got the letter here, was that the, the holding tanks and systems for potable water gives Austin leads to significant risk of waterborne illness. And so that was the main concern was with the health department. So I don't know how they address it, if they feel like we had the authority to do so, but it, I know that that was a sticking point. And I don't, I have, I know nothing about health department policy, so.
I was going to say Tom Nor was here, I had it, but that's okay.
But yeah.
Just been more concerned about the liquor, I guess.
So yeah, so I don't know if that's an issue or anything like that, but the, the typical health department rules and regulations that go along with it, that was the concern, that was why it was.
I'm surprised they would be criticizing the holding tank process because that's what they endorse.
I think the difference is the holding tank, so whether there's water in a tank that is pumped out to wash your hands and then pumped into a holding tank to never be discharged. So here the difference is if it's in a holding tank and you're washing your hands with, say if you have, you know, if you've got a tank in the back of your house and you want to use that to wash your hands, that tank sits there with water, it is not getting, you know, it's not being regularly cleaned, it's in a tank, it's not, it's not like it's coming from a municipal wastewater or a municipal treatment plant or it's from a, or from a septic, it's in a holding tank itself. So I think that was the concern and I don't know anything about the, the issue here, but according to this, that's what they were, and I think that's where the sticking point was with, how do you know that there's not going to be an issue with the tank?
We did it for years at the Ball Stadium.
I'll go there next summer and I'll check it out.
This summer?
This summer.
This summer.
Are we okay, are we okay with the letter?
Yeah.
We're okay with the letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good point, good point.
Quick question. I understand the fix to this problem is almost a quarter million dollars. Is that correct?
I, I'll be honest with you, I don't want to, I don't want to attest to their finances, I'm not really sure.
That's.
Yeah, it may be, it may be.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty expensive.
Okay, I think we have a letter prepared, correct? Mrs. Hurley?
Sorry?
We have a letter prepared?
We do, yes, it's in your briefbook.
Next item on the agenda is a letter of support for, to allow Sunday hunting. James, you have the floor now.
Oh, I do.
If you'd like it, if not, you can, you can.
Kick the can.
Give it up.
Yeah, I mean, does anybody have any questions about it?
I know, from what I understand, we're, we're just changing times, we're expanding the hours and, I, I wanted to really say, and I think there are a couple of still here, I'm glad to see that, I'll tell you, it's not here, it's Annapolis. I don't know what's going on up there, but you have people who absolutely have no real, I mean, they have no workings whatsoever in, in Wycomico County whatsoever, but they fight tooth and nail to keep us from expanding two more hours of hunting on a Sunday in, in Wycomico County. I just don't get it. So that's where it starts, so, and I hate to tell you that, but if, you know, you have people who are willing to travel, you may need to go there when the bill's on the floor, however they do it, it was in committee, and sort of share your same concerns you did today. But that's, that's the sticking point right there, always has been. So are we okay here?
Yeah.
Everyone's good? Yes, Josh?
Also, I think I did hear back, I heard back for, so the Tri-County Bird Club, there's been multiple folks who've reached out who said they didn't get anyone to give them a heads up and they're a little PO'd about that.
Yeah, we kind of rushed it, we know.
But there, so that, obviously the difference is, you know, I don't know if we have the, if we, we should in this situation go to the, every, from, from County Rexon Park to get their opinion, but, I mean, the bird club, the bike club, the, you know, all of the individuals who, you know, you name the, the group, you know, the Farm Bureau is another one, that, you know, the, the one who complains the most, and I've sat in these hearings in Annapolis for, for years, the ones who complain the most are the farmers, because there's individuals coming across their land and they didn't expect to be coming across, you got, you know, that, so it, that's, that, that has always historically been the challenge. So to be able to get the, it's, it's important, I think, regardless, and I'm happy to move forward as, you know, but to be clear, usually when you go in a situation like this, you say whether this is public or private, whether this is bow or, you know, muzzleloader or, or turkey or deer, you name the classification of hunting, you go through it and say, this is what we want. From what I'm understanding is this is not a simple change, this is a, a whole nine yards, we want Sunday hunting regardless, which, say what you will, if we don't interact with the individuals who are there to get, who they're, who may be upset, you know, by an unintended consequence, it's a nice that we're moving forward in that direction, but I don't feel like we've done a good job in interacting with the public. And just like the liquor issue, if we don't do a good job in making sure that everyone who is our, you know, who participates in, you know, has been brought in and heard, we're going to hear it, I don't think that's good policy, so.
So you can crop damage on Sundays, every Sunday, all year long. And I would like to say that most hunters, all hunters that I know are all law-abiding citizens and they don't cross people's lands without permission. I know that for a fact. And I know that there is a lot of money spent in the hunting industry. Every time you buy a piece of camouflage, there's a 20% tax on it. And it's, it's expensive, it's expensive sport. You can only, if you're working day, if you're working like I am, seven, or five days a week, sometimes Saturdays, you don't get the chance to hunt on Sundays. And I mean, you, you should absolutely have that opportunity to, to use your, your right to, to go out there and feed your family. If you want to go and shoot a deer and, and, and put it in your freezer and feed your family for the summer or the, the next winter, because the price of beef has gone up 50%, then by God, you should be able to do that. That's, that's none of my business. If, I understand, you know, the bird watchers, you know, they don't want the hunters out there, but if you can find a hunter while you're watching birds, good luck, because they're, they're wearing camouflage and they're, you know, they're going pretty remote. And most of the times it's, 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 it's private land, you know, most of the time. But they do want the, the ability to hunt on public land and I've been on public land many, many, many times on Sundays scouting. And I have never seen a, never seen a, a, a bird watcher out there and, and I, I know lots of other people that go out on Sundays and, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a time where you can go in the woods and not have to worry about getting shot at because, well, legally, nobody can hunt. But we don't see a whole lot of action out in the woods. So, you know, this is a missed opportunity, I think, for a lot of avid outdoorsmen like myself. And, you know, I didn't put this bill forward for myself full-heartedly. I've had people come up to me and say, hey, look, you know, you're a council member now, you know, you like to do this and we love it, and can you go ahead and try and do something about this? So I just, I talked to a few people, we made some phone calls and, and I, I just don't see the, I mean, this has been long overdue. It's been since the 1700s, I think. It's been a long time and, you know, the only people that I've ever heard complain about it ride horses and a lot of people that ride horses around here also shoot guns. So they don't, they, they like their, their ability to, to experience the outdoors, but anyway.
We have, we will get the letter.
Yeah, I just want to point out though, the draft letter for this particular topic as well as the gray water systems, the letter just says House Bill Number XX, that will be filled in and then if there's a Senate bill, we would also send the letter to the Senate Committee as well. Okay?
Mr. President?
So I agree with both councilmen. I think it's important to always keep the public aware of what's going on. But I think hunting on Sundays is important because you only get Saturdays right now in a seven-day work week. Most people work Monday through Friday. If Saturday's a washout, at least they'll have Sunday to hunt. I like the bill, I like the letter, looking forward to it.
Let me, let's move forward if we could. We have affirmative on that. Next item on the agenda is the capital improvement program for 2024. First item is Public Works. Mr. Whitelock, I know is not here.
We have Heather.
We have Heather Langford.
Okay. Heather, thanks for sticking it out.
I appreciate you guys accommodating for me tonight.
Don't know how many questions we are going to have for you tonight, but we do appreciate you being here. Do we have any questions for council in reference to the CIP? The roads? Okay. That will, that will be that part. Second item on the agenda is, sorry, I want to go back to where I was here.
I got a que, I have a question.
Go ahead, Joe.
Compared to previous CIPs, I see a lot of this is PGO. Is it usually that much PGO or is it more, is it less this year than?
So as we have, as I have stated, sitting in this chair for the last couple of years, we have been looking at that 2024 was kind of our last year of, of higher level of funding from debt and that we were upping the amount of PGO that we would do. 2025, my current estimation for 2025, if you look at the overall use of debt for 2025, it's really tiny because we do not have a lot of debt dropping off our rolls. So again, when we started this conversation back with the Public Safety Building, I, I have been stating all along that this has been coming, that, and that the other reason we're looking at the high level of fund balance is that I don't expect interest rates to go down between now and when we go out for debt service in the fall. And we do have a healthy fund balance. We don't want to erode it significantly because the market likes us having that healthy fund balance and they've stated that in our last couple of years of when they, when we went to market. But utilizing some of that fund balance to avoid paying interest costs looks like one of the most financially prudent things that we can do as a county at the moment for our needs that we have.
So without sitting here with a calculator and about how much PGO, how much of our fund balance are we going to use in this capital improvement?
I, I honestly.
If you don't have it right now, it's fine.
It, it is going to be a balancing act between where we estimate, I haven't yet received constant yield from the state, I haven't yet received our February income tax payment, that'll come on the 28th. Those are our two biggest indications as to what our revenues are going to be for '24. So that's kind of the starting point for our budget process. So between that, how we want to utilize American Rescue funding that we still have available to us, how much fund balance we want to use and where we're going to spend the recurring revenue that we have, I can't answer that question completely.
It's fine. I, I just know that earlier this evening, we've had a lot of conversation about fund balance and reserve funds, so, you know, that's why I was.
Yeah, I, the last several years, we have been able to utilize more PGO than we have utilized in fund balance in our budget. So the amount that we have budgeted for PGO is higher than the amount that we have budgeted to use in fund balance. I can't, it's kind of a, I, I, I need to be in March-April timeframe to give you a better answer.
That's fine. Thank you.
Yes, Josh?
Just to remind me again, the, I guess the.
Let me clarify, are we still in the discussion with Public Works or is it CIP as a whole? Because if we're done with Public Works, then there's.
Well, I have a question on Public Works, if you don't mind.
Okay, does anybody, yes, Josh, I'm sorry.
It's, if Public Work, Works-ish.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess, I guess I don't really know where the, our sewer and water expansion, where is that's going and where are we putting that within the CIP? And is that going under Public Works or is that going elsewhere? And do we have that in there currently, which?
We do not currently have that in there. That is going to end up being a separate department. As to the structure, I can't answer that at this moment.
So we have to get the sanitary district first, so that's the infancy step. And then I think, have you guys been present, I know, I know President knows, but you'll be presented with a white paper, so I'm assuming you'll get to see that. Anyway, long story short, any, yeah, I mean, it's, that's step one, so.
We are, are we committing as a county capital towards it or are we just thinking we'll fund the, we'll open up the department and then try to get grants and just go from there?
It's kind of. I think it'll be both.
I think it's going to end up being both.
Yeah, will happen.
It's going to have to be to be able to accomplish this. Having worked on the side of the city of Salisbury where they have water and sewer, you're, the state isn't going to give you 100% funding. The state didn't give them 100% funding when they had to rebuild the, you know, the sewer system a second time after it was upgraded. So there are low-interest loans, but the, the county will have to have some skin in the game. But until we have a set project, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but until we have a set project that this is what we want to start to build, a lot of this is theoretical. So we need to, as a county, determine what is the best place, what is the first place, what is the place we want to focus on? And then we have to find location, how many connect, all of those things, and that's all going to determine the structure that we create.
Okay, and we're not putting a placeholder or anything like that?
My concern with a placeholder is everybody's aware that we have a water and sewer issue. Any placeholder that I put in here, I'm going to be, we're going to be criticized for either putting too low or too high. And so I, I can't win in that instance because I really don't have a crystal ball. So everybody's aware water and sewer is coming, but to kind of like some of these other projects that we don't, we kind of let council know about, until we have a firm estimate, it doesn't make sense to put a number in here because we are then striving towards a number that may or may not work.
Shirley?
Yeah, so I think Barron Creek Road is a good example of one of your placeholders because there's no funding in.
Correct.
Actual CIP for that project.
Well, and again, in, as I've stated in the past, the CIP does not typically show projects that have been previously funded and we aren't intending to fund again. Barron Creek still has that question mark as to whether or not we're intending to fund again, so I have left that on as a placeholder. If you look at Barron Creek, you will notice that in the prior appropriation, there's $850,000 in that, there's no additional appropriation in there because at this point in time, a determination as to what path we're heading down is not been finalized. So I, I did look up today, of that $850,000, there's $597,000 remaining available to spend on a Barron Creek project, whatever that project ends up being. But right now, I've left it on there to remind people that we, we know about it, but a determination hasn't been made as to which path we're doing.
We're working with the state and federal level for that?
Yeah, for the grant funding, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. So my other question is, a few years ago, we had a lot of large rain events and, you know, there was a lot of stormwater issues and there's a couple of projects on here, the Kwood Drive storm drain, Kensington Woods drainage. Can you give us an update on those projects?
So please correct me if I'm wrong, Heather, since I'm here, I figure I'll start, but you are welcome to jump in over me. The Kensington Wood drainage is actually in the CIP for fiscal 2024, so it is intended to be funded in this next fiscal year. Kwood Drive, it is one that my understanding is that it is to benefit one or two houses in that neighborhood. It is not a whole host issue across the neighborhood. Am I correct in that statement, Heather? Correct. So at this moment, the use, the utilization of funds has been, it has been left on here, but it is not the highest priority. The Kensington Woods drainage will affect, impact more people and more property, and so that one has been prioritized in the funding stream.
Does that Kensington Woods drainage one impact the Upper Ferry Road residents? I think that was one of the main concerns council received regarding drainage, the flooding issues.
No.
No.
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
You might, I mean, this, there couldn't be a better time right now to try to take advantage of what this federal government's throwing down here. So, I mean, Barron Creek, you know.
And again, as, kind of like.
Has been, you know, it's been something that these people have really been asking for years and if there's better, if there, there couldn't be a better opportunity than right now to try to take advantage of that.
So as, you know, as we demonstrated earlier this evening, if the federal government wants to plop money in our lap, we will gladly come to council and ask for CIP amendments, capital budget amendments and, you know, utilize those funds as we view appropriate and as they have been designated for. So again, if a, if a grant comes available for those projects, we would definitely bring that to council.
Do we have people who are looking for grants in that general dredge? Because I know we don't have a grant administrator yet. Are you suggesting that there are people in, or Heather?
On specific projects, we're definitely looking for, for the grant, for grants, yeah, for infrastructure grants.
Okay, okay.
I'm consistently diving in looking for grants, yes.
Okay. The CIP as a whole, questions?
Barron Creek, are we talking about that now? Can I mention anything about it?
We just talked about it.
Yeah, no, 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 I just didn't want to.
Where were you last?
Well, I've been here the whole time. It's just, what I wanted to just make mention was, just, you know, if we, you know, if we're building the bridge back, is that going to impact the, the traffic on the highway? I don't know if you guys have, have talked with the state about that at all and, and done any studies on that. I mean, I'm just, I'm just talking about it, so.
We're just replacing a road that's already there, or I mean, that was already there, so.
Right.
You know, it's, it's a safety issue at this point. I'm, I'm more so concerned if a citizen is to roam back there or whatever, fall, whatever, whereas the county are still held liable. So it's a dangerous situation, the road needs to be fixed. But we are trying, you know, we've, we have it in the ears of our delegates, senators, state senator, or, you know, yeah, state senators and congressmen, so hopefully we'll be able to get some funds for that.
It's beneficial for law enforcement EMS.
Right, correct.
The only thing I could say is, you know, I don't have a problem with the bridge being built. There's a, there's one resident on there that, that lives really close and, you know, he, he doesn't like the cars going by really fast. I don't know if there's any way we can deter the speeding on that road if it is to be built.
I'll talk to the city, they're great at that.
Yeah.
But no, you are right, yeah. He is concerned about it, yeah.
Yeah, he's real close to the house and, you know, I, we don't really want him to come back in here really upset at us. So if there's something that you guys can be proactive about it.
And honestly, James, I'm going to be very, this is not something that's going to happen within the next year. I mean, just, just honestly to tell you, this would be funding that we would get probably this time next spring, maybe. It's really a project that is in our mind, but it's kind of on the back burner at this point.
And so again, this CIP does not anticipate any additional funding. We have left it on the list for the reasons previously stated. But if we achieve additional funding and make a determination as to which route we're going exactly, how it's being built, all that kind of stuff and the cost, it, this would be amended and/or be updated in the next version.
Thank you.
The only question that raises is how are you going to ask for grant funding if you don't have any idea what the cost is?
So, well, actually, go ahead.
No, it's, it's a big issue because we, we've talked about West Side Collector. I mean, the prices for both of those, Barron Creek and West Side Collector are very much before the inflation took hold in the last year. So it, what we possibly do is, you know, someone from, from finance could, could give a projection of, but I, I don't know that we can go out and sort of get bids at this point, especially Barron Creek, because we do want to have public input on that. So, yeah, I mean, it definitely is an issue that we would need to tackle before we said we want this dollar amount.
Yeah, because the other problem with per purchasing rules, it doesn't, if we go out to bid, we're kind of stating that we have the funding available to us and we don't have the funding available to us, so.
I don't know whether that 800 and some thousand, you want to begin to put that towards architectural and engineering.
So we already, that's how the number has gone down from 800 to the five number that I said and now I have promptly forgot, 597 remaining. There are architectural drawings. I said, and now I have promptly forgot, 597 remaining. There are architectural drawings. The issue is, is that the bids that we previously got are significantly outdated. And so now the question becomes, and the other question, and I, I can't answer that, maybe Heather can, or Bunky, is, has there been regulation changes by the state that would make those architectural drawings out of date and have to be updated? I can't answer that question.
That was my next question, whether DNR, you know, have we met their regulations? Do we know what they want? You know, I mean, that was, that was a hang-up before, you know, whether the fish could get through or get up the ladder, or if they were going to put in tiles, or they're going to build a bridge, you know?
So again, this is, it's a non-funded project listed on here for informational purposes.
Any other questions in reference to these? Yes?
I can just say that recently, we did do the bridge studies. That was one that was looked at thoroughly just because we knew it was a hot topic. I know the fish question has come up quite a bit, and we've been looking into that, into the heights as well. So possibly even doing a, just the minor feasibility and going back and just reviewing what has formerly been proposed may just be something very, in the very near future that would be able to fall within that funding to allow us to see what the actual numbers would be.
All right, great. Any questions in, for the CIP in general, Ms. Hurley?
Yeah, so I just need to know if council wants to meet with any other departments or if you're ready to move forward with considering this at the next meeting. As a reminder, we are supposed to adopt it by the third Tuesday in February. If we don't do, do that, we have to extend the date of adoption.
Fine. Yeah, I think we're good. Right? We're good. Josh, we're good, Ms. Hurley?
So I, when we come, we will be asking for a slight amendment because I added wrong. So there's a, there's an addition, there's an addition mistake in there. I make mistakes, I, I admit that, I have admitted that lots of times. So I just want you to be aware, when we come, we're going to be, what you have been provided has basically typos in it and needs to be amended when you adopt it.
If you can just provide-
Three places.
Pardon me?
Move a decimal point three places.
Yes, I, I think I'm going to add about seven zeros to this. So, no. Again, I, I apologize.
Yes, as soon as she has it, Ms. Hurley, we'll send it over to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's changes.
Ms. Langford, thank you for being here and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Very much. So we're done, right? Any else you want to?
Nope.
Record.
Okay, all right, that concludes the, the open legislative session. We'll now go into closed session. Thank you all very much. Thanks for coming.